One. I call to order the study session of the June 10th, 2025 special meeting of the city council at 5:22. Pledge of allegiance? Beau, would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
[laughing] Cross the guard. If you're after me. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, may we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Francois.
Here.
Councilmember Keegan.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Detoy.
Here.
Mayor Seaman.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Is there, do we have anyone for public comment or on the study session topic only in person or in Zoom?
If you are joining via Zoom, now is the time to raise your virtual hand to speak on item eight, public comment for the study session budget session only. We do not have any virtual hands raised.
All right. Thank you. So we'll have opening remarks from the interim city manager.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is the budget workshop for council and the community to review where we are and where we're going. It's the city's spending plan for the next year based on input from the public and direction by council. It also represents a snapshot in time. It's a living document that can and will likely be adjusted as necessary throughout the year to address the needs of the community. The budget is the result of hard work by your dedicated staff, especially your finance team led by Brandon Walker and Henry Chow, and based on the input of each department head and their staff. I want to commend each and every one of them for their efforts, as well as former city manager Sujah Lowenthal. Given this is my eighth day on the job, I can't take any credit for it, but will be happy to take the blame as needed. The proposed budget for your consideration is balanced. The theme this year is "We're good, but..." To have, we have to throw the "but" in because while our revenues are projected to increase by 2% and while our rainy day fund will remain at 20% of our operating budget, the city faces substantial challenges over the next few years down the road. It is simply a fact that even though the city has not really grown in terms of size or population over the last several decades, the things the city does has increased exponentially due to state and federal mandates and the cost due to these things, of course, has grown as well thanks to inflation. Because of that, as part of adopting this budget before the end of this month, I'll be asking that council reactivate its finance subcommittee to do a deep dive with the city treasurer and our staff into our financial trends and explore ways to both cut costs and increase revenues to maintain the highest quality services to our residents, businesses, and visitors. In the meantime, I'll throw it over to administrative services director Brandon Walker to provide more details on this year's budget. Brandon?
Thank you, Steve. Mayor, members of council, thank you very much for attending and listening to this budget workshop, essentially our first session to discuss the FY '26 budget. So essentially, what we're going to do is take a 50,000-foot look on some of the themes that Steve touched upon in his opening remarks. So the agenda for today is to do a deep dive into the FY '26 proposed budget. Again, this is for the fiscal year that begins in about a month on July 1. A high-level summary, look at some key highlights for topics of discussion and consideration, and talk about what Steve had talked about, our fiscal outlook over the next five years, some of the headwinds and tailwinds we're seeing now as we look into our crystal ball, and talk about some of the next steps moving forward, which includes formal budget adoption. And we'll talk about more about the finance subcommittee and revenue options, as Steve had mentioned in his opening remarks. So at a high level, again, good news for FY '26. We looking to see revenues stabilize. Property tax, which is our biggest source of revenue, has been buoyed by a pretty stable housing market. Though the cost of inflation and looming tariffs are down in the pipeline, how we project our housing stock and market and the housing prices to remain quite stable through the next fiscal year. Again, as Steve mentioned, we are presenting a balanced FY '26 budget, which is good news. Again, as Joe San Clemente had presented in a previous session, we continue to focus on a very enhanced and well-funded CIP investment effort when it comes to this next fiscal year. And again, as, you know, much different from other organizations that aren't as in good financial shape as we are currently, we are maintaining healthy general fund reserves at 20%. Some of the areas of focus in the FY '26 budget, one is improving revenue collection efforts. You'll see this theme kind of carry through in some of the themes of the '26 budget, but also some of our efforts looking at maximizing some of our revenue streams that haven't been looked at in quite some time, often a few decades. And lastly, focusing on efficiency efforts. What does this mean in this current budget? One is a very big project coming down the pipeline with Henry and his team, which is implementing a new HR payroll and finance system. We hope to identify many efficiencies and cost-saving measures through this effort next year. And with the work of our new interim city managers, taking a look at all existing contracts, see where we can dedicate resources to the high-impact areas. We're looking for efficiencies across the board. So that's a, not a specifically outlined theme in this budget, but that's more of an approach and a context we're looking at starting the next fiscal year. Let's talk about the general fund revenue at a high level. Essentially, what this does is it shows you for every general fund dollar earned, where does that money come from? Obviously, in the far left, the majority of our revenue, nearly 40%, comes from those property taxes. So as the value of the homes increase and stabilize, the city is able to benefit from those proceeds. The 18% working left to right, service charges. So these are licenses and permits, interest income, a pretty hodgepodge amount of revenue items in that bucket. Next goes other fines and permits. TOT, which is the hotel bed tax, is about 9%. Vehicle and lieu, which is essentially a former property tax, about 7%. What's very key in this is how little a portion of sales tax our general fund budget is. As opposed to many other cities in the surrounding neighborhood, we do not have a heavy reliance on general retail and sales tax, which is a cost and a benefit. It's a double-edged sword. As the economy is buoyed and economic activity enhances, we're not able to reap in that general, you know, rising tide. But again, there is downside protection, meaning that if there is economic downturns, especially in the business community, we're slightly more insulated when it comes to a lesser reliance on sales tax. So let's switch to now, whoops, general fund expense. Where's your general fund dollar going? More or less, it's, the general fund budget and the general fund expense is essentially a reflection of community priorities. Obviously, public safety being first and foremost. So over half of every general fund dollar goes to fire and police services, reflecting the needs of the community, then ensuring that public safety remains a top priority for council and for every resident here in Hermosa. 19% going to our public works department and the sending order with the Parks and Rec Committee Development and Management Support Functions there laid out before you. So some of the major highlights, obviously, the budget is a living document, very, very detailed, over multiple hundreds of pages of information. These are some of the key aspects that I want to point out when it comes to the FY '26 budget in particular. Again, a very, very robust investment in CIP projects. It combined about $34 million in CIP. That includes about $15 million of carryover projects from previous years and about 15 and change of new projects. So again, this reflects the commitment of great work on Joe and his team of investing in infrastructure. Why is it important? Deferred maintenance, operational costs. It's, these are long, short-term investments that have long-term rewards. As you maintain our infrastructure and keep it in a working shape, we forego long, expensive capital repair expenses in the future. So very, very important that we continue to invest in our CIP projects. Second, this came out of, the next two items came out of the CIP budget session as a result of council direction. One is a $100,000 earmark for citywide beautification efforts. This is a bucket of money. This has not been programmed or dedicated. I think coming out of that, meaning there was a direction to form a subcommittee on beautification citywide efforts. So what this is essentially, it's an earmarked pot of money to allocate at the council's direction during the fiscal year. Again, not programmed currently. As council gives more direction and more feedback, as we get more community feedback, this money can be programmed mid-year and adjusted as seen fit. Third item, 75K for 14th Street Beach Restroom Maintenance and Rehab. Again, a very ingenious effort by Joe and his team of, this has been a deferred project over multiple, multiple years. Again, as the ticket price rises for full reconstruction of this bathroom, we're looking at what kind of maintenance efforts can we do in the operational budget this year? A little TLC, tender living care for this facility to see if we're able to keep it in a working order. And lastly, more important, is maintaining that 20% general fund reserve. So again, pivoting to the five-year outlook, what are some of the headwinds we're seeing economically that are, could be speed bumps or significant roadblocks as we march into the future? Looming deficits, which we'll touch on in a few slides. As Steve mentioned, the cost of inflation affects everything. Services we receive, equipment we purchase, asphalt, pipe, tools, everything across the board is not insulated from inflation. This is something we're seeing at the construction level immediately, something that we plan to be, a very sticky situation moving forward. Particularly, the biggest impact for us is in FY '27 and '28. The LA County contracts for fire, lifeguard, and beach maintenance services are up for renewal, are up for negotiation. We've heard of various ranges of potential cost increases, as high as 20% or more. We are starting planning for that now. There is an earmark in the supplemental budget to initiate at least a analysis of our current finance, fire structure, the needs of Hermosa. So we're planning and working diligently with council and the city manager's team on planning for what our options are as we continue to possibly face potentially large cost increases for these services over the next few fiscal years. So FY '27 and '28 is a very uncertain year. Costs could swing pretty aggressively. It all depends on how those negotiations go. Again, we will keep council and the community up to speed on how those are going as we negotiate with the county. Potentially, an economic downturn. As I mentioned, we are insulated from, obviously, the whipsaws of sales tax ups and downs. However, an economic downturn has been prognosticated in the business press for the last four or five years. Any kind of economic downturn would have second, third-order effects on our revenue streams. Housing prices, again, 40 cents of every dollar coming from property tax, affecting the local job market, affecting, you know, the businesses and restaurants in our downtown Pier Plaza area. The potential of an economic downturn could have ramifications for our budget in any given year or so. It's something we're keeping a very close eye on. This is the number you've seen before. We have about $160 million in unfunded CIP needs over the next, near term. Major possible repairs down at our pier against the paving needs, not meeting up to keep our PCI above an adequate level. There are many unfunded needs that are essentially, are not funded, or shown as funded in our next projection that we'll show you. So these are the looming capital needs that accumulate, and obviously, the longer you wait, the more expensive these projects get. CalPERS performance and pension liabilities. Pension costs are a reality for all municipalities. CalPERS has an expected rate of return of 6.8%. As they underperform that market, that market target, that amount is either borne by the employees or the employers or the cities. So I think that as CalPERS goes, as does the finances of many local organizations, local municipalities. So obviously, we encourage and hopefully, there's a strong stock market and an equity portfolio for CalPERS, but should they underperform that 6.8% discount rate, cities bear a large portion of those pension costs. And lastly, the insurance fund. So the insurance fund is overfunded. There's a council policy to have the insurance fund balance of $3 million, projecting it to be slightly over this next fiscal year. This funds the cost of premiums, liability, but it is also the bucket which we claim, pay out claims and litigation efforts. So litigation's expensive, claims are expensive, cities are always prone to liabilities up and down the spectrum. Insurance costs around the board are increasing. So we are essentially funded per council policy, but large litigation claims could really ding this fund balance. So it's something we keep a very, very close eye on. Let's talk about some tailwinds, some positive news. I don't want to be a complete downer. There's been consistent council fiscal restraint. I think this is indicative of your predecessors and the council here, too, is being, is living within your means, not overburdening the ratepayers, not overpromising of what the revenues can support. We've been very conservative in what we, and how we budget. We have been blessed with slight surpluses in previous years. That's a combination of coming out of COVID, that's been some, due to some vacancy savings. As you'll see in the next slide, those days are tightening. You're seeing essentially the general trend of the expense curve rising higher than what revenues can support. So again, wise fiscal decisions thus far, but we are hitting chopier waters in the near future. And as I mentioned, the council has had the wherewithal to keep a healthy 20% reserve. GFOA, which is essentially the authorizing board for government finance, recommends about a 16% general fund reserve. We're currently at 20. So that's a very healthy level. Why is that important? That keeps borrowing costs down. If we were to go out for bonds, for capital facilities, or for any other debt needs, having a healthy reserve would improve our credit rating and keep borrowing costs low. So that's why a general fund reserve is quite important. As I mentioned in the previous slide, the insurance fund balance over $3 million now, but again, a few payouts, the rising cost of premiums, that fund could be at a lower level in the near future. OPEB, which is essentially funding our retiree healthcare commitments. We are funded, overfunded, 150%. So this current budget projects no needed contribution to this OPEB account. So a direct result of wise council decisions in previous years of funding, which is essentially a long-term liability, we're in a good spot here. Again, focusing on CIP investments, and again, as I mentioned before, with the financial system replacement, and taking a hard look at all contracts, a real focus on efficiencies moving forward. So I apologize for the small font here, but this is a current, right now as we stand, a five-year projection. And I'll caveat with a few things. What happens next month, next year, next three years is very, very uncertain. The whole tariff scenario that's popped up in the last two months was not really on anyone's radar previous to that. So things can change. So what I'll mention here is that you'll see a widening split of revenues being outpaced by expenses starting in FY '27, '28. We've essentially built in a conservative estimate of what we think the county could come back with. Again, this does not account for any large increases that we may see from the county. This does not assume any kind of revenue measures or any revenue maximization efforts. And again, too, this doesn't really reflect the needed investment in CIP. Essentially, this is what I would call status quo, is if all things being equal now, what is the expense and revenue trend line looking like over the next five years? Again, things could change. One piece of good news is that, the one person who helped me, this is really the brainchild of Henry Chow, is that he actually saw the tariff situation unfolding before it actually did. So he told me this a few months ago. So he's somewhat accurate in projections, not 100% accurate. So there is some wisdom in the general directionality of these lines, but again, I want to caveat that these are just projections and not necessarily anything you're approving today with these numbers. So again, we've been beneficiaries of a balanced budget the last few years. Tougher times are coming. So to wrap up, let's talk about some of the next steps. Again, this is budget workshop, one to discuss the FY '26 budget and getting direction from council. We'll come back in two weeks for a formal adoption before our July 1 fiscal year. And as Steve mentioned, post-budget adoption, we would look to reconvene the finance subcommittee to start tackling and looking at what are some of our revenue maximization efforts that we can do in-house to make sure that we have the resources to fund what the community needs. This is just an illustrative example, this, this is not limited to just these, but some of the things that are currently on our radar. We've recently wrapped up a fees and charges study. There are a lot of user fees, again, that's cost-for-service fees, permit, plant checks and the like. They haven't been updated and some of them near over 15 years. So looking that they have not kept up with inflation. Taking a look at some of those for council consideration, taking a look at whether or not what we're charging for parking citations makes sense for our region compared to our neighboring agencies. Meter rates, looking at market trends and whether or not there's some wiggle room there to potentially raise or take a look at. And lastly, stormwater and lightning districts. These are two districts right now that are reliant on general fund subsidies and just having a conversation at the council level of whether or not that format should stay the same, or should there be consideration of borrowing some of these costs onto the ratepayers. So that wraps up my presentation. Again, I know there's going to be a lot of discussion on some of the supplemental items. That completes everything. Willing to answer any questions or concerns from council. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. Are there any questions of staff? No? Councilman Jackson, do you have any questions? Comments? I just have a couple, then. You mentioned a couple, three things here that I'm just a little bit curious about. Number one, you, inflation is coming. Potential economic downturn is coming, possibly. And tougher times are ahead. Those were your words, or tougher times are coming. Where does all of that concern about the future come from? From tariffs? From inflation? I think the numbers are down nationally and so on. Or are we talking about state numbers or federal numbers? I mean, in other words, where does that concern about tougher times are ahead? There may be, of course, I'm not doubting that, but where does that come from? Is there hard data that says that's happening, it's going to happen?
Anecdotally, yes. I think there's a piece, essentially a construction index, essentially like it's like an inflation CPI for construction costs. That's gone up double digits the last two years. I'll get the exact numbers for you. The cost of supplies and services, right? I think obviously, majority of our staff costs, our costs are staff costs, right? Labor costs. Anything from construction, supplies, equipment, specifically on the public work side, just the cost of producing and executing projects just costs more. I think that that's the issue there, is obviously pension cost is probably a big concern also, as I mentioned, but there's no inflation projection. I think we are relatively conservative. I think there's about a 4% or 5% inflation adjustment built into those projections. So that's relatively what we've seen. 2% has been the going rate year over year. So there's just a general concern, I'll just say, more of a predicated stance of council, that's something that we're keeping an eye on. It's not overly concerning, but...
Just in addition to that, economics is called the dismal science for a reason. Your staff here is taking a very conservative approach to this. We've got a lot of things coming up, costs that are going to be going up, everything that we've heard coming down the pipeline from the county lifeguards, county beach maintenance, to the fire department, to more. These things are going to be increasing. Our fellow cities are seeing this across, where construction costs are going way up. The tariffs are one thing that will affect the supply chain, but, you know, the supply chain that we've heard so much about since COVID seems to never be ending in terms of being affected. So we're looking at this, hopefully, we hope that it doesn't turn out as bad as this, but we need to plan for it.
Okay. I appreciate that. All right. Thank you, Brandon. Yes, Councilmember Detoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Brandon, for that high-level report. The one thing that caught my eye was that 150% OPEB savings. So that, is that healthcare, or does that also include the Section 115 trusts and everything else that we have set aside for kind of as CalPERS goes up in costs until OPEB members become the majority and then hopefully contributions start dropping? So, I mean, you mentioned retiree healthcare, but it is also the pension savings and everything else that council set aside, and that's where you get that 150%?
Yeah, there's two components. The one I specifically referenced, OPEB, is the retiree healthcare. So essentially, it's a point in time. Again, that could change in any given year, right? Under market performance, what that's saying is, based on the current market performance and our projected liabilities, we have about 150% of what we need. Again, severe market correction happens, unfortunately, that number drops. So it's very sensitive. We're in a good spot now. Essentially, like I mentioned, there's no dollar planned to refund that. That's one portion. Another portion, which you mentioned, though, is we also have a pension stabilization trust to the 115, which is essentially about a million and change to mitigate against any kind of rapid declines in the CalPERS performance. Again, that's, wise decisions by council is essentially a squirrel in the way, that's a tough call, right? It's putting away today's dollars to cover future liabilities. Council's been very proactive in doing both those efforts.
And then, are there other questions for you or for Steve? But we keep on talking about county fire, beaches, maintenance, lifeguards. Do we have any, you know, more realistic numbers just for, you know, maintenance? Right now, we talk about how much we pay for maintenance, it's part of the Lot C contract, is that correct?
Yes.
So right now, we split the revenue...
Correct.
...of Lot C, and then they take care of our beaches.
Yep.
What would that cost? Are we looking at third parties right now to see, you know, if they come back and say we need a million dollars a year to...
I understand that...
...grade the sand, but, I mean...
Well, yeah. I mean, there's a certain number of things about that contract we want to look at, including a standard of care, which we feel that they're not up to at the moment. But in terms of renegotiation, a lot of these things up are, I think it's 2027, if I'm correct. So it's two years from, that's why we say, you know, in the outer years, because in 2027, they're going to come back, and it's going to be more than what it is now. You can bet on that. But we're going to do our best in negotiating and showing, you know, what we can do and help them in terms of the county. We've got that agreement now. If there's other ways that we can work things out that doesn't involve dollars, that would be best, but we need to be prepared for, they might want more dollars.
And then specifically, the county fire contract, the letters have gone back and forth for a little bit, just for the public's knowledge, who is here, you know, what is the county demanded that we have denied so far?
No formal offer that I've seen. I think we've kept an eye on their negotiation with a lot of the smaller agencies. We're taking a look at that. I believe it's a small city in the San Gabriel Valley, I'll have to check on the exact name, I forget who it was, actually agreed to a contract, but it's no formal proposal yet from the county.
Perfect. Those are my questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Detoy. Are there any more questions of staff? Councilmember Francois.
Thank you. I assume that if I've got specific questions on like these department supplemental requests, now's the time to pose the questions on them.
Questions of staff?
Yeah. Okay. So just going through some of these supplemental requests, if we choose to not add them, I assume this money goes back into capital improvements, is that correct?
So I can go with one of three places. If council decides not to move forward with any of the items on the supplemental, they can be reallocated to another potential project or operational need. They could go to capital, or they would drop to just available fund balance, which could be allocated by council for any future need during the fiscal year. So those are kind of your options.
Okay, thank you. So could you explain the $50,000 for street sign design? Could you explain what that's for?
I'll turn it over to our public works director.
Thank you, Councilmember Francois. We have approximately $50,000 set aside in the maintenance budget to design, fabricate, and install enhanced signage for signalized intersections only. So currently, we have large street signs that are signalized intersections, and many of them are worn. This would look at creating a new design with the current city logo and branded colors, and over time, we would replace them with city crews.
So this is 50,000 to do the design work, and then they would be replaced as they wear out? Or is this to just replace all the ones at the signalized intersections?
Thank you for that question. So the design work is fairly minimal. It would only be a very small fraction of that cost. We would likely do the design in-house. The majority of the cost would be the fabrication of the signs, and then city crews would do the installation over time as they're needed to be replaced. Some of the signs are faded and aren't in need of replacement, some of them are in better condition, but this would work towards fabricating primarily.
So this is 50,000 that would we spend to do that? If we didn't, we would just continue to replace them as they exist? Is that correct?
That's correct. There'd be no change in design, and they would only be done as needed.
All right. Thank you very much for that. I have a question on the $18,000 for an intern to do the coffee with a cop and what the fuzz events. Now, currently, as I understand it, this is funded with a grant? Is that correct?
No, it's not. The way that the structure of these events work is that in-house staff, be it sworn and admin staff, are attending these events. A lot of the food and beverages you see, almost all of them are usually donated directly by the restaurant. So there is no grant supporting it. It's just staff time as part of their normal duties to do community outreach, and then a lot of the materials, the foods, the supplies and whatnot is usually donated by whoever's hosting the event.
So the expense to the city is all the staff people that are there currently, correct? That attend these?
Correct.
And this part-time intern would be replacing some of the work that the staff would be doing if we continued to have these events?
Yeah. The model of this is that PD's identified that community outreach obviously is a pillar of some of the services they provide, it helps with community relations, that this intern would alleviate some of the admin duties that essentially existing staff is doing. So obviously, a cheaper per-hour employee doing some of the setup tasks that is otherwise being borne by department staff now.
So if we chose to not fund this, what would occur? So if we chose to not fund this, what would occur? Would they have less events? Or would the events continue to be performed by presumably people that get paid more than this part-time intern? Or how would that work?
I could defer to the chief of that, but I think that these events have been a success. The turnout's been great, the positive impact in the community. So I would foresee the PD continuing to do these events at the current staffing level now.
Okay. Thank you.
Chief, did you want to add anything to that?
Mr. Walker said it very well. Yeah, we've been doing this for a little over a year now. It's been very successful. Community outreach is very important, and we want to continue that. It's been done on staff time. It would continue on staff time without this being approved.
So presumably, if we hired this intern for $18,000, we'd be saving more money because the staff people's time wouldn't be consumed on these functions, is that correct?
Yes.
Or would we be having more of these events because we have an intern available?
We have no intention to increase. We have a pretty full calendar as it is, so there's no intent to increase the number or the size of the WTF events and the community outreach events. We would continue at the same calendar that we've been doing. But yes, you're right, it would free up the full-time employees to work on other duties so that the part-time intern could focus exclusively on this.
Thank you. And they're about like once a month, correct?
Yes.
And do you have any idea how much it costs the city to put them on as far as
We haven't done a calculation on what the cost would be. There's some marketing materials, there's little handouts, little bottles of sanitizer and marketing things that we like to share. It's a way to bring people in and start that conversation. We haven't done an analysis of what the total cost is.
Yeah, okay, I'm just thinking of the number of staff people that are there and the cost of all that, but that information, of course, is always helpful. But thank you very much for that. Thank you. On the $90,000 for an emergency operations plan for the city, is that to hire a contractor to do it? Is that what that's for?
So the initial intent, so a little background on this issue is that this is out of the reaction of what happened to the Palisades and the Malibu fires, is making sure that the community has an emergency action plan. So this would be potentially a consultant hired. Just a quick update on this item, I think we've kind of brainstormed in-house about this item. It was included as the proposed budget was released to the community. I think over, you know, looking at further evaluating this, what staff does recommend now on the floor here is we're going to look at the potential use of grant funds, of what can we get out from granting agencies to execute this effort? And we've actually reached out, Mo and his team has reached out to other agencies to see what they're doing and how. So I think, long story short, I think we would be comfortable foregoing this item at a council level and reallocating the $90,000 while we pursue grant opportunities and looking at best practices from other cities. Why reinvent the wheel if there are other plans in our neighboring agencies, particularly our neighboring beach communities, is focusing those efforts? So what that would do is free up $90,000 for council to direct to other projects or capital investment.
And just to add to that, Councilmember, that it hasn't been updated since 2016, so we do want to do it, but we do think they're all
Yeah, I was just wondering if there was a way to have our Maurice, our current emergency official, to create one in-house.
And that's what we're going to look at, including with grants, but we would recommend that you can go ahead and take this off
Oh, okay.
The budget at this time.
Great.
We also know that an adjacent city is redoing theirs, and we might be using their homework to do our own. I didn't say that.
Okay, then, thank you on that one. The $135,000 for the server, could you explain a little bit more what that's for? This is not something that was budgeted, but because we have additional supplemental requests, it's now been put in there. So I was wondering if you could explain a little more about that.
So the second page you're referencing is part of the supplemental request for the equipment replacement fund. So essentially, what this is, is a running inventory of the equipment that we currently have on site that needs replacement. So what does this do? This is the backbone for mainly our financial system, which is Eden, and a lot of our PD dispatch and records retention and records management system. So this is essentially an infrastructure, an investment in infrastructure and technology. So if these things fail, what does this mean? If our financial system goes down, it jeopardizes our ability to collect payments from vendors. It potentially affects payment of paychecks to employees. So not a very sexy item, but keeping these servers up and running essentially is the brain and backbone for our current technology system. So our IT team has done a thorough analysis of our replacement schedules, what's the highest critical need. These are the projects they've identified as the greatest in need and with the obviously highest consequence of failure if not funded. So what this is coming is out of the equipment replacement fund, which is a set-aside fund that we use to replace mainly technology and fleet equipment.
Okay, thank you. The $45,000, which sounds like a great deal, I hope that's all it would be, to replace flooring and water ceiling in the main courtyard area at City Hall, I assume that's what we're looking at out here, correct? And we're now going ahead with these types of improvements because we realize we're not going to be tearing down this building and building a new City Hall. So I assume we're moving on with different types of needed maintenance and repairs to this building to
Correct.
Okay, so I assume there's other, there are other things in the budget as well that includes those other types of facility maintenance things that we need to keep our building from deteriorating more?
This is the first one, we're going to be looking at the whole
Yes.
Whether, whatever happens with the Civic Center in the future, it has needs right now that need to be addressed.
Right, okay, great. Thank you on that one. Let's see, I think I had one more related to that one. Near the end of the page here, we have additional funds, facility maintenance and repair services. Is that what we're talking about then? Additional funds for other?
Is that specific to this?
Yeah, is that for the HVAC item?
Well, you've got HVAC at $23,000, then $40,000 for additional funds for facility maintenance and repair. So I assume that's what we're talking about in City Hall then.
Yes, yeah, Joe's team is
We've got Joe right here.
He can speak to it.
We won't pretend to be engineers.
Thank you, Director Walker. Thank you, Mayor, Council. So thank you for those questions. So these supplemental line items for additional building maintenance and HVAC items were included in there because they were an increase over the general average annual amount that we include year to year. So when we have a larger increase, we lineited them so that council can see these increases from the prior year. There is a great need for deferred maintenance in the city. Public Works is working tirelessly to address the deferred maintenance needs. We have to continue to address things as they come up. We are seeing a much increased need for continual repair and preventative maintenance for our HVAC systems. We had numerous HVAC repairs and replacements this year and are ongoing into the coming year, and growing need for building maintenance. And so these budgets are to reflect the need that we're seeing. We don't believe the base amount that's included in the general line item is going to be sufficient to cover what we anticipate for the coming year, given the growing need as well as increasing costs.
Okay, thank you. One more on the, there's a $310,600 for a lift truck. That's for one lift truck, correct? And I'm assuming that's one truck?
That's correct. So we have one truck. It's our bucket truck. It is what Public Works relies on for anything that's up high. So our maintaining our lighting system, our facilities, trees, it's countlessly needed and relied on. This vehicle is 23 years old. City has deferred its replacement for years. It does have to, it is required to receive safety certifications every year, and we're seeing increasing costs in repairs. One of the larger looming repairs on this is the hydraulic system, and if that goes, we're going to have a pretty expensive repair on our hands. Staff is recommending its replacement before the maintenance costs exceed the replacement value.
Okay, and this wasn't included in the regular budget, but because we have this supplemental request, it's a new need that has developed recently then, is that
Yeah, we typically do supplemental requests for all vehicle purchases, and so Public Works actually did minimize how many vehicle purchases we did have this year, but this is one that we felt was priority versus some of the other replacement needs. Over time, vehicles just need to be replaced.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's all on that. A quick question on revenue. And I think I just saw the already answered it. The film revenue is estimated to be $70,000, yet we've hired two people, but those people that are hired deals with all special events, and that income is expected to be $241,000.
Yeah, it's two different items, it's a little bit, yeah.
Okay. And the Clarkfield revenue is expected to be $90,000. That's already been included in a subitem that's already in our revenue, correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of staff?
I wanted to ask about the funding for transit. Do we plan on staying with the local bus system, or are we going to talk to
Because that's on the agenda tonight for your approval, but we're recommending that it be taken off the agenda so that staff can go back and have discussions with the Beach Cities Transit folks over some data and some improvements
Yeah, so that's not
Information.
So it's not finished on the budget, okay. Well, we'll tackle that later. I wanted to also ask about, we have some funding for a green business program, $18,000. We used to get grant funding for that, and now we're not getting grant funding. Are we going to continue with that program?
That's the plan. Doug, our environmental service manager, can speak to that more. But yeah, if that's more information, we can get back to you at the next study session of the kind of the
From what I read, I think we were getting 6,000 in grants, but we're missing 12. And my question is, there's no metrics of what we're really, we never get a report at the end of the year, what we did, what we really accomplished. When we give out the awards, we give out awards to a lot of like single proprietor businesses and things, and I think it's kind of run its course. In other words, after you meet with the same businesses over and over and teach them how to recycle and compost.
Let's come back on the 24th with a little bit more information.
We'll come back with some It becomes a little redundant. My other question is, did we look at moving away from, or at least evaluating the cost savings from going to SCE as opposed to CCA for all our electricity needs?
Not, no current plan in this budget, but if that's something that council wants to evaluate, there's no plans for that in this current budget, but we'll open to that consideration.
Okay.
If that's the direction council wants.
Thank you, that's all.
Any other questions? Councilman Jackson? Any questions? Okay, thank you. Seeing none then, I'll close the council questions and move this to public comment. Madam City Clerk, do we have any, anyone on public comment on the study session, topic only, in person or in Zoom?
Mayor, we did not receive any speaker cards for, related to public comment for the study session. And looking over to Zoom, we do not have any virtual hands raised for public comment.
Okay, all right. Then I'll bring it back to council for any further discussion, if there is any. I'm sorry, public comment? All right, I'll open it up again.
I didn't fill out a speaker card, but I would like, I do appreciate the opportunity to speak. David Grayson, resident and also Public Works Commissioner. I just thought I'd try to add a little bit to the conversation by sharing some things that I observed in my review of the budget. So there's an item in there for South Park School patio gates, 45K. It looks like that would be to make some dedicated area for activities. I thought that was interesting. And it looks like there's 10K in for drinking fountains at South Park as well. Negotiations underway for new three-year MOUs for all employee labor groups. That seems like, I don't know if there's any risk associated with that, but that seems like an important thing for us to want to understand. Just an observation, as far as staff, the number of positions has generally remained quite constant over the last few years. I thought that was interesting. There's 60K in there for housing element update. You know, we went through the cycle. I'm hoping that having that money in there represents our intent to stay vigilant about making sure that we can keep our housing element in compliance with the state so we don't have any more being subject to builder's remedy or other risks there. So that struck me as a good thing, if that's what that indicates. There's also a substantial increase in the amount of money for the zoning ordinance update, so maybe now's the year where we're going to accomplish even more and make a major amount of progress in that. I thought that was interesting. The grant fund section of the budget appears to be quite sparsely populated, so I understand we just, as we go along, we'll look for opportunities and as they're there. But of course, we know that that's a fact of life, is going out for grants to augment our funds. And those are some things that caught my eye, I just wanted to share. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Yes, John Barry, please.
John Barry, thank you. David mentioned one of, two of, I think, the largest inter-year revenue declines. So I think I'm right in saying that the intergovernmental lines, which are largely the grant lines, declines steeply. But the other line, which has about a 1.3 million year-over-year decline, is interest income. And it's a little hard to see from the PAC whether that's a reflection of the amount of cash in the market or anticipated returns or something else. And I just wondered if Brandon or the treasurer might comment on interest income specifically because it's such a big inter-year variance, 1.3 million dollar decline.
Thank you. Yes, please, Brandon.
As John pointed out, so interest income is an interesting phenomenon. I think what, this was kind of a background noise pre-COVID. Essentially, what it is, it's the interest earned on our investment pool, of all our cash, that sits dormant. So obviously, our city treasurer works to put our money to work. Post-COVID, the interest rate environment was more beneficial for higher returns. So long story short, is we're being more conservative with what we were estimating. I think what we've seen the last few years, you get four to five percent in, you know, simple CDs and money market accounts. What we don't want to do is we want to be conservative with what we're budgeting. So essentially, what this is reflecting, the decrease, is a more conservative estimate of what we hope the market does. This has nothing to do about the performance of the city treasurer, it's more about, there are two choices, it's a double-edged sword. If we are aggressive and assume interest rates stay quite high, we need that money to fund services during the year. So what we've done is taken a more conservative approach of protecting our downside while realizing the upside, meaning that if obviously the interest environment stays quite beneficial for our cash reserves, there'll be some extra funds throughout the year. But again, this is a tough value judgment, is that do we over-budget and over-promise essentially what the interest rate environment is going to do? So this more reflects a conservative approach of being somewhat realistic of, will interest rates stay high for this long? The downside would be if we budget higher and rates come down lower, we're here with you at mid-year talking about potentially mid-year reductions. That's something we wanted to avoid.
Great, thank you. All right, seeing no one else, last call. Back to council discussion, I believe there was no more. Is there one more try for any more conversation, discussion about the budget? No? Yes? Okay.
Just one comment, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Jackson.
Thank you, Brandon. Thanks for all the hard work you and your staff did in putting this all together. I'm glad you mentioned the revenue collection component that we're going to look later. I also think our admin citation collections should be considered and reviewed, as well as our cannabis delivery tax. That is revenue that is being left on the table as well. So I just wanted to point out those couple things, since we're talking about revenue collections, so the admin citation collections, as well as the cannabis tax, delivery tax that I don't think we've been receiving.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I don't know what your approach is, like if there's specific things we think should be eliminated, whether you want to hear more input on that and have separate motions for that? Is that what your intention is?
No, not tonight, not tonight. This is a study session, basically, and we've, I think we pretty much had our study session. If any questions, specific questions about the information given us this evening, now would be a good time to do that. But I think deliberation and motions and so on will be next time.
Right, so there's no reason for us to, tonight, explain our opinion on whether specific things should be eliminated or
No, not at all.
Okay, thank you. I do have an additional question then, on the $60,000 housing element that a speaker brought up. That's for this year, but I'm assuming that the year, or the two years that we would be working on the next housing element, we're talking about a lot of money to put that together, right? We would probably be hiring a contractor, a consultant, to come up with a new housing element, or what? How is that going to work out in the future?
Welcome, Allison.
Thank you, good afternoon. Thank you so much for that question. The $60,000 that is in the budget this year is for housing element implementation under the current cycle. We'll begin preparations for the future cycle probably in the 2027, 2028 fiscal year.
So 2027, 28 is when we will be budgeting
Hiring a consultant to
But not until then, because things can change between now and then.
That's correct.
So the $60,000 would be
It's an eight-year cycle as well.
Right, right, right. So the Right, right, right. So the 60,000, what would that be? What type of things would we be doing to ensure it's implemented? Because I thought it's, it's a plan, it's there. We, we can't tweak it at all. So what, what would that be for then?
There were a lot of commitments that the city made in terms of programs and activities associated with the plan that require additional work in order to effectuate them. And so that, the funds that have been asked for this year will be directed to that purpose.
Okay.
I mean, there's too many implementation actions to mention, in fact.
Right, okay. Thank you very much on that. And then there was a question about the $45,000 gate, which I did have a question about that in, in the park. As I understand, this gate is needed so when there are certain educational activities going on in a certain area, it's to keep other people out because there's been wandering people or dogs or is that what this is for this?
Thank you for the question and good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and council members. That is exactly what it's for, for our current park after-school program to ensure the safety of our participants because we did have individuals not associated with the programming coming in our courtyard space in front of the building and the rooms itself.
So even though it's public property, we're having events there and we need to keep other people from going in and?
Just during program hours, when the after-school program's in session and we hope to have a summer day camp at that facility in the future and the gates would be open outside of program hours. It's just the cement area right in front of the building.
And is that 45,000, is that a high end? I mean, I would think a gate would cost a lot less than 45,000.
I'll actually have our Public Works Director come up and explain.
A conservative estimate, but we never know until the bids come in.
So right now, nothing is designed, so there's multiple swing gates that would have to be fabricated and we would want them to match with the existing railing system that's there. All metal components are coming in extremely expensive these days, especially operable gates. So right now, it's a ballpark estimate, I think, of what we would need. We're hoping it's conservative, but I will say any metal component right now is not cheap.
Does it have to be metal?
To be something that would be durable for what it would need for its operability and to look aesthetically pleasing adjacent to the existing railings, I think it would have to be metal.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. All right, so that closes council discussion on this item and brings us to adjournment for tonight's meeting. So I will adjourn this meeting and then we will go directly to our regular meeting scheduled for this evening. So this special meeting is adjourned at 6:14 and we will go right to the open, the session, our regular session.
And Mayor, if we could get just two minutes, just to reset the, our computers to make sure.
All right, so let's take a five-minute break. How's that sound?